I'd like to call a word the regular meeting of the Moonee Village Board for May 27th. Bill Ryan, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray, here, Holston, here, Horn, here, Pop, here, Mason.
I believe he just had a big.
He's bypassful.
Well, I'm going to get into this specific. Just so everybody's aware, we're all doing our part and helping our population increase in Moonee, so one way or another. At this point, I'll turn to Pastor Rapperson for the invocation.
First of all, thank you for allowing ministers to come in here and pray. It's one of the greatest things America has done, and we appreciate it. Shall we pray? Tonight, Lord, once again, we obey the scriptures and pray for those in authority over the village of Moonee. Paul the Apostle said so clearly to Timothy, "The first thing I want you to do is to pray. Pray every way you know how. Pray for everyone you know. Pray especially for rulers and their governments to rule well, so we can be quietly about our business and living simply in the humble contemplations. This is the way our Savior God wants us to live." So we pray also for not only the leaders here tonight, but those who are in harm's way, our first responders and police, fire, and the Will County Sheriff and deputies. We pray that the churches of Moonee Village and township will have the same burden and passion for one another and for everyone as Paul the Apostle did for his fellow believers, that there will be continued unity of the Holy Spirit to work together for good for all the people of this village and township. May all of us live as Micah the Prophet spoke in chapter six, verse eight, when he said, "But he's already made it plain how to live, what to do, what God is looking for in men and women. It's quite simple. Do what is fair, just to your neighbor, and be compassionate and loyal to your love, and don't take yourself too seriously, but take God very seriously." May the Moonee Village officials wholeheartedly seek after you, God, rather than seeking to be noticed by others for their achievements. We thank you, Jesus, for asking the Father to advance the Holy Spirit into this meeting room tonight, so that the correct decisions will be made to encourage, to strengthen, and uplift all residents of this community. You want to do great and mighty things that we know not have if we would just hear from you and then obey you. So we bless them tonight, now and forever, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Son of the living God, the blessed and only ruler, the King of kings and the Lord of lords, who alone is immortal and who lives in unapproachable light, which no one can see. To him be honor and glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go to the open of the public agenda items on the line. You'll make your comments in three minutes. Come to the podium and give your name and address, please. No takers, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'd like to say a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Horn and Holston, okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk's report.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, one thing I haven't heard under my report has to do with the acknowledgement. It's no small thing. Our, uh, just read this, it's easier to read it than to try to paraphrase. On May 16th, at the IESA sectional track and field meets, the Crete Moonee Middle School seventh and eighth grade boys, track and field teams were named sectional champions. This past weekend, thirty-one athletes from the Crete Moonee Middle School attended the IESA state track and field finals in Peoria, and the seventh grade boys were awarded third place as a team, and the eighth grade girls were also awarded third place as a team. Also this weekend, the Crete Moonee High School varsity and junior varsity girls softball teams were named first place all-conference champions. It's good to see, good to see all the, um, opportunities for our youth to be involved in activities that are encouraging them to build teamwork and participate and get off the little electronic gadgets all the time. So, uh, that information was provided to us, and I just wanted to pass it on. I have nothing further under the mayor's agenda. Uh, next, we have the administrative report. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Officials' report, public works.
I have two things. The evening last week, or, I'm sorry, two weeks ago, we spoke about the road projects that will be starting here in the village. There was a little bit of a hiccup with airway in the signage out on Ridgeland Avenue. Um, our, our Public Works has been out speaking with the businesses, and on our website, the residents out in Gorman's Farm can see the detours that will be posted. Julie has been out there marking the grounds. A company by the name of J.J. Newell will be out doing the curbs first, and then they will come in and tear up Ridgeland Avenue. And again, for the residents out in Gorman's Farm, please check the websites. Because the detours coming back into Gorman's Farm, you will be able to go in off of Ridgeland, but going out, you're going to have to go out towards Harlem Avenue. And again, this should be starting next week, and I know that we said last, or two weeks ago, we're going to start this week, but there's just been a little bit of a hiccup in that. Also, too, I'm going to defer a little bit to our superintendent, who is sitting here as far as the project on Court Street. We talked about the hole that fell, basically fell apart right in front of St. Boniface. We did go out for a bid. The board approved not to go over forty thousand dollars. We had four companies come in for the bid, and the lowest bid was from M&amp;J at twenty-nine thousand, eight ninety-seven, forty-nine. And there could be some unforeseen costs, but again, I'll defer to DJ, our superintendent, on this. They've already seen one minor problem, but it should not exceed the forty thousand if we approve.
Correct. If you have any questions, I can answer. The unforeseen problem that we've had right now is we found a, a lateral that came off somebody's sump pump, not uncommon, tied directly into the storm. Ordering a couple additional parts, you know, delayed a little bit of time. We might have one more that we've, uh, found today, and the other unforeseen cost is going to be the total cost that I'm going to have and manpower to help assist with this job. We did this as kind of a joint effort to keep those costs down. So my crew was out flagging today. We had road closures. The police department was notified, as well as the fire department. They did their best to detour routes through Main Street. So the project's on schedule. I'm hoping to have it done tomorrow, completed tomorrow without any other delays, so.
Do we have something posted on the website about that construction?
Uh, no, it's kind of a short, quick construction program. We, we started it today. We're hoping to be done tomorrow, so it wasn't anything that was posted on the website. I believe, I know we took some pictures today, but I don't know if they got updated, and I didn't really, you know, update anything on the website as far as, you know, partner dust construction going on at this point. So if you'd like, we can do that, but we're hoping to have that project right up.
We might just run a chip or, you know, they can take a detour if we put it on the website, on Facebook, if they have time.
We can do that, absolutely.
DJ, I know we talked about the extensions off of that. Has that been taken into account at all? Do we need to do that also? Is that part of this project? In other words, the main trunk, the way I understood it, is not collapsed.
Correct.
There's some, I'll call it tentacles coming off of it.
Yeah, I guess I should be clear on that. For this total project cost, we did end up replacing the brick structure that I talked about, and we did cut through Court Street. Those were kind of some additional costs that, once we got into the project, those extra legs, it just made it sense, as Trustee Holston kind of pointed out at the last board meeting. It could escalate into some further things. He took the initiative to, to make the, you know, consensus to not exceed forty, so I worked within those parameters, and that's why the village is helping with that, to make sure that everything's okay. So yes, to answer that, we are changing a lot of those extra legs and features, just so that we don't have to revisit this again.
Pretty much, you were able to do the project at?
All of it, for, all of it, yeah. Again, right now, current price is at twenty-nine, eight ninety-seven, and there may be some additional just because of.
Good job. I didn't expect less.
No problem, sir. Anything else? All right.
One thing I would like to add, and then go back to Trustee Holston's question. As far as out on Gorman's Farm and Ridgeland Avenue, they're estimating about two weeks for this project.
Correct.
So, just, just so everybody out there.
I think it's a good idea to put something on the webpage and on Facebook so people can.
If that is posted, originally, detour route. It's just the storm wasn't, but we'll get that out there for you. So, we did give advance warning for the detour route for all the residents. The businesses were notified personally by myself with names and the detour routes for the trucking companies, as well as the detour plan. The delay that we had was the signs for the detour route being constructed and given to us. That was the delay in starting this whole project. They want to work from the west side of town to the east side of town, since that's going to be one of the major road construction problems, and it's going to impact a lot of the trucking and the industry, industrial areas that we have maintaining off of Moonee Manhattan, south on Ridgeland, throughout the full, complete project until it's done, so at least the trucks or the residents can get home off of Moonee Manhattan at nine-fifty-seven that way, which is take the detour route and they come back. So, but that has been posted.
I'm sorry, DJ, also, by name, our streets in the main town, main street, when do you think those are going to start?
Again, that's kind of a up in the air right now at this, because they want to start west to east.
It's going to be this year, this year sometime.
What's been given the green light right now is for the concrete company to start tearing out curbs and replacing those in some of the sidewalks and the ADA corners and the intersections. We'd like to get those in before we actually do the final grading and the pavement and stuff like that, so they'll establish that. They've been given the green light to do that, and I can tell you, we've been working on about roughly seventy Juileys that were called in that we have to get done within a time period, and we're getting those done. They've been done. So, we, as a municipality, own sanitary water, storm, and some electrical street lighting, so we're in charge of making sure we locate those, along with the other companies that have gas and their electric and so on and so forth. So, we should have that wrapped up hypothetically. You should probably see some construction, I would hope, next week, starting next week.
And with our GIS mapping, wonderful thing that we have, will this help us in the future with photos?
Yes, and especially with the stormwater, the collapse, the GIS guys were out doing the storm structures, was trying to map that, and they actually picked up the new structures and these new tie-ins, so that will happen in the future. But yes, all this will be GIS and has been GIS as far as the infrastructure is concerned.
I believe one of the things that was, not just weighing in on the signs, but also wanting to get permission from two other jurisdictions, which was Town Check and County both for the detour route.
Correct, yeah. From, from the local county highway department, Bruce Gould's office gave the blessing for the detour route, and then I talked with Dave Deutsch, Highway Commissioner, since we're going to be going into that township area, yeah, to work on that. So we've come to a mutual agreement. If any of the trucks, you know, damage any of the turns or the radiuses, we'll just make sure that everything's dialed in. I've even alerted Cockle that if a truck or something happens to gear off or get out, get out of the way to let us know, as well as let the trucking companies know that if they, if they call their dispatch or where they've just left and they've had an issue, they call it in right away, that we can address it right away. So that was one of the themes or the topic when I talked to the businesses.
Good.
I have one more question. It has nothing to do with the road projects. On this mosquito, are you going to start?
We've actually get, uh, started larva siding already. That's a two-step process. You kill the larva before they turn into adults, you don't get bit. So we're out larva siding right now, all the storm structures, and the mosquito machine is getting tested this Thursday for accuracy. Once I get that certificate, start getting out there as the weather breaks and, and get this done. So I usually like to pick it up in June, first week of June, so hopefully we'll start seeing that with the, with the hot and the cold and the damp stuff. It's just not been, you know, high winds, it's, it hasn't been available so soon to answer that question, I guess.
Okay. As far as your recreation, okay?
Um, just a couple things, and just, Moonee Parks and Rec is, in conjunction with the Peotown Library District, has an evening at Fireman's Park on Thursday, June 11th at eight PM for a glow-in-the-dark story time. They'll read nighttime glow-in-the-dark stories and have a craft together. They'll have free glow-in-the-dark items for everyone. Bring a flashlight, bring a blanket, and they said, bring your imagination, and that program is free to kids of all ages, for anybody of all ages. And then two, June is starting up very soon, and that's when we start our movies in the park. And so June 12th, Friday, June 12th, is the first movie, is Big Hero Six, and June 26th is the next one with Honey, I Shrunk the Kids. So that was all from Parks and Rec, and I just wanted to add and aside to Monday, June 1st, this coming Monday, is the next Moonee Women's Club meeting at Frankie's at seven PM. So again, this is something we're starting up. A lot of ladies have come on board. There's about a hundred and thirty-three that have spoken up and have becoming involved, and we're just getting started, kind of getting to know one another kind of thing. So any adult woman age eighteen and over with a Moonee mailing address is welcome to attend.
True.
End of report.
Thank you. Trustee, Horn, Finance.
Yeah, this is a legislative update on, on finances. As we had talked about before, you know, one of Governor Rowner's proposals was to cut the, the local portion of the state income tax that we get by half while there was a vote today in the Senate, and thirty-nine senators, senators voted no and twenty voted present. So that proposal went down in flames, so we're, funding.
Good.
So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Business Development, Trustee Holston.
I'm scared to say anything, Mr. Cockle. The advance auto part ribbon cutting was last week. Did you hunt with it?
No, please, no.
How about, hey, go first.
No, baby, go ahead, please.
That was held last week, and it was a very successful Friday at ten o'clock. The Indian Victory Motorcycle opened up this weekend as well, and I'll let Mr. Pop expand upon that. And the Animal Wellness Center is celebrating their tenth anniversary open house on Sunday, June 14th, from twelve to three. You'll note that I'm using my computer tonight instead of printing paper. The nice things about that was when DJ was talking about the village website, I was able to hold up and look at what she said on the vendor's website and do that, so I think we're going to continue that direction. Makes it a lot better to do this kind of stuff. That's all I have.
Good.
Thanks to Kevin Daly for a nice job on his report, and Mr. Clerk, I re, send it to you.
Building Services Code Enforcement, Trustee Pop.
This probably doesn't have a lot to do with Building Services, but let me just say that I got a very modern pole, and I'm having nothing but trouble with it. It just likes to turn off the network. Period. Me and computers, they're, anyway. Back to Indian Motorcycle Shop and the, business, I should say, and Advance Water, who are some very, very minor, nothing to do with public safety or health issues, very minor. That's why they're open, and those will be corrected very quickly. End of report.
Thank you. Public Safety and Police, Trustee Raisik is not here. Room Chief.
I want the cap on tap, May 29th. I'll be there from five AM to nine AM. Anything anybody contributes will help get me down off the seat off the roof of Duncan Millers, so come on out, coffee cups for ten bucks, and T-shirts for fourteen and hats for fifteen. We sell a few raffle tickets.
So you're a hangout.
Pardon me?
What is the raffle for?
Uh, it's for S&amp;W M&amp;P fifteen, first prize, and then the second prize is a Tarp GPS, and third prize is a concealed vehicle.
Yes, for Trustee Raisik, for EMA, EMA just completed its first day CPR certification course last week. Sergeant Lazaroni instructed class to, an awesome job, Chief. Thank you. EMA team is completing its greater communication, traffic control, and some emergency vehicle operation training tomorrow night, so they will be around town. If you see EMA vehicles around town, it's, on emergency, it's training. This past week, Moonee EMA assisted Moonee PD, Illinois State Police, with shutting down I-57. State Police investigated a DUI crash involving two semis that rolled over on 57, and I-57 shut down for about five hours. Moonee CERT team, team currently has fifty-three members, and the next training is, we're finalizing the training date, that'll be June 27th, or there about, the final search and rescue class will be given for the CERT team. If anyone is interested in CERT, it's still not too late to sign up. Just give us a call at the Village Hall, and we'll get you plugged in. It's your turn, Mr. Mayor.
CERT stands for?
CERT is Community Emergency Response Team.
There you go. One last thing I want to make, but please, could you give us an update on the Explorer program?
Um, we're underway. We have another new member joining, who developed us at nine strong with them, and we just did search and rescue with them last week.
Good. And that's available to each?
Anybody fourteen or over that's in high school, through the age twenty.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just add on to what Administrator Batista just mentioned, I want to point out that there was some major flooding this week in Houston, Texas. A number of people were killed, but a note was that the press noted many times that a number of people were saved by the actions of the EMA and the CERT program. It is a pretty important program. It's something we need to take seriously. I'm a member of the local CERT team myself as well. None of us know when emergency is going to come, but there were a number of people who were saved this week down in Texas due to the actions of the EMA and the CERT people and those training that come ahead of time really plays huge difference, so I would encourage the public to become involved.
And just to expound on that a little bit, we're part of a network, an alliance of, of our sub-region, like part of our dispatch center, but we're also part of the entire county program, so let's hope that it doesn't happen to us, let's hope that it doesn't happen to our neighbors, but we're there for each other as well. And because at a point of devastation like it's happened to some of these communities, it's good to know that you've got people nearby that are also pursuing the same goal. And I believe, what did you tell them before? We have a, is it a state or federal mandate by 2017 to have a program in place? Is it 2017?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all the Crete Moonee Department has. Nothing further on the officials' reports. We'll go to the jurors' report.
Thank you. We have one item for the board's consideration. This ordinance approving assigned variance on behalf of JTR Heating and Air Conditioning. The zoning board conducted a public hearing the last Wednesday pertaining to the application. I believe the vote was in favor of the ordinance for the variance, so it's up for the board to view and consideration.
Hunter said a motion to approve the recommendation of compliant and zoning for the variance.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
This sign is supposed to be right at sixteen feet, according to the drawing that we have.
Okay.
Um, that's right off of Court Street. Very good drawing, looks like a nice sign. A sign that I, that's right adjacent to a residential area, but, and it says double sided illuminated, could create some issues for the residents.
Well, I, pertaining to residential area, that entire area is uncommercial. So if there's residents, they're, they're not actually zone residential. Uh, there's no property.
Living homes across the street.
Everything, basically, almost everything from Egyptian to the tracks is uncommercial. Just as a point of record on that. Uh, there's a couple divots right off of Egyptian that are still zone residential, but most of, most of that whole region right there, I feel like it, a couple mapped yesterday, where most of that's uncommercial.
In reading the report, though, it says that the reason for this is because of business emergency, that we hardship, but it didn't happen. Why a sixteen-foot sign?
Well, as a former PNC chair, you know that part of the, just like TIF districts and other things like that, there's certain wording you have to use. The hardship, if you will, is for visibility. One of the problems that they're having, the, the thing worse than the size, I believe, is the location, and that's because when I-DOT came in and took over a significant portion of their land, they basically don't have any front yard anymore. The parking lot is right up to the edge of their property line. Normally, that's not the case, but because the I-DOT needed places to put their boxes and other infrastructure going to and from, the controls and all that, there was extra land that was required at the time. And as, as it was explained where you were at the PNC meeting, I think that was the biggest issue there, had to do with the, the variance was because of the fact that there is the unnecessary, there is a setback requirement from the property line, but the property line is an artificially, that's the way to describe it, Larry.
It's an artificial, I, I believe imposition that we impose on almost any type of business user. The undue hardship language, Trustee Holston, is wording that the state requires for a variance. It's got to show that it's not going to adversely affect the, really joining landowners. I don't believe anybody at that public hearing came to voice any objection to the request.
There was no objections.
No objections. But the undue hardship, every ordinance, sorry, every variance that we propose to the village, one of the requirements under state law is that the landowner proves undue hardship.
Yeah, and again, I understand the reasons for the sign, that it's a beautiful sign. I've mentioned that. It says that, that's a very tall sign, and other businesses in the area want to do the same thing. How does that affect the look of the town? Is that part of our plan? As a PNC chair, I wouldn't be concerned with that.
Well, I guess a, a landowner could come in conceivably, indicate that you, not you, but the village issued a permit for such a signed size, you know, what would be the rationale for not giving out one of a similar size? That's a possibility. I guess it could be countered by indicating, well, that's a corner lot, it's a commercial district. I'm not sure how many a business would come in, but they, they could conceivably assert that position. I believe years ago, right across the street, we had a similar situation with a potential, I believe, at that time, gas station. Same requirement, I believe, he asked for the combination, say, a sign because of the intersection. We had a request, I believe, at that time, fifteen-foot sign.
I had some thoughts too on this. Now, again, I would agree, it's a nice sign. There are people living over there. I know it is zone, um, zone commercial, but there are, there are a few families over there. I'm concerned with the, the brightness of this sign. I'm assuming that these can be dialed back a little bit. I know that BP had a very similar sign, and I've noticed that they've dialed that back because it can be extremely bright and almost a hazard because your, your attention is drawn to that sign and, and at least my experience with the BP sign, that it's, it's just so bright, it blocks out everything else, it draws your attention to it. So I, I would, I'm going to vote for this, but I'm, I'm assuming that the lumens can be adjusted.
Trustee Pop was at the meeting?
I, I did attend that meeting, and that was a big, a very large concern by the PNC and the owner of his, and I understand that there could be another owner later. I don't see it happening in the near future, but he was just so reasonable on his terminology to be sure the lumens are not like some other signs. He's going to keep it down, knowing. He's going to keep it down, knowing that it's residential and have that kind of control. They were concerned about it too, and they made it a point. They brought it up, and then the planning and zoning committee discussed it even further. There shouldn't be a problem, at least with the company, you know, and the brightness of the sign, they're not going to make it bright.
And did they say about hours of lighting it? Are they going to turn it off? Or is this going to?
I would imagine they never turned it off.
They would not?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect them to.
But the lumens are adjustable, and they may have a timer on it. It even does that. But they said it would never interfere with someone driving down the street or following residents to the side. That was just the statements made.
I, I'm not real sure, I think to answer that question, I don't know if it was addressed at that meeting or prior, but they probably have, like some of these newer TVs and everything else where they can adjust when the room lights go down or whatever else. I would imagine there's a light sensing so that the contrast ratio is not too extreme. So the brightness it needs in the daytime to be illuminated and seen, it may not necessarily need to have that same brightness at night. So I'd assume that there's a mechanism in there for that. Is that, trustee Pop, is that what they did?
They said that.
Okay.
There's a timing device in there.
It'll be, most of us will head in north or south. It'll be offset just enough on the drawing that you'd see it. As you're approaching east or west, you'd see lightness if you're headed east and see more easily, it'll be on your right inside. But as you're going west, you would notice it as you're passing through.
And may I also add, he was very passionate about a section of the sign will have messages on it. And he's not going to be, I'll use the word atrocious with that, but he wants to advertise the community events on that, along with very minor advertisement, and he would not change it daily or anything like that.
Well, I think he indicated he didn't want to have the scrolling thing. It causes people to be distracted. It was only going to be, you know, whatever it is, it's going to be that. They might flip to something else at a different time, but he's not going to have this constant thing where people are going to watch the same. So I agree. You see what he's very?
He's very sensitive to the story. He wants to give us exposure on governors for like the Easter Bunny thing and, you know, Halloween apps and those kind of things. So that was really nice, I thought, he's willing to do that.
We have a motion in a second. Bring someone for the ver- variants. Roll call, please.
Trustee Olson? Yes. Moore?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Going on the old business, nothing specific we listed on the agenda. And, you know, we're working on a few things in that area. Put it to the public, non-agenda items. If you have something to say, come to the podium, we'll make your comments in three minutes, and you can name any others.
Hello, my name is Ken Vissika from Gulfista, Alakinta. I have a question about renting. They currently restone at Skine, but are they allowed to rent units in the future there? And the second part of my question is, the trees out in front, are any of those responsibility to the village or all of them Gulfista?
Gulfista.
Okay, let's go back to number one then.
To the, to my knowledge, renting is not an option. It was exercised by previous administration, or previous management. But already do you have a legal opinion on the issue? There's been some debate, we haven't really scrutinized that aspect of it. The age issue is more of a, more of a critical issue that has been, seems to be ignored. And they have been made aware of 17 to 20-some violations of age, and they're supposed to be mediating that. One of those was, as you indicated, the renter. So already have something else to add?
Yes, your honor. If I may, sir, back in, when they first started back in mid-'90s, there is a, an agreement between, at that time, I think it was Abar Corporation and the village of Moni. I'd have to refer back to that agreement to see if there's any specific provision about leasing, because it was about a 20-page document. But that was when it first started. So if I can look at, by the next board meeting, I'll inform the mayor and the board.
So would that be enforceable?
I gotta look at the agreement. If the agreement, if it's in the agreement, yes, sir. Okay, but we gotta look at that agreement. That was way back, almost 20 years ago. And it wasn't, the new owner, or the owner now, wasn't a party to that previous agreement.
But he did take over the agreement on his, on his side.
Oh, yes, sir. Whoever buys it takes up to that agreement. So I gotta look at the agreement, so. And I'll know by the next board meeting.
It's been implied and kept, passed on for various administrations that that was a prohibition, that there should be no renting over there. But for us to have a legal response to that, we really need to, before we officially make a comment, our council will review that. Hopefully I have an answer by the next meeting. We're going to the tree zone? Yeah, sunside. Of course, so do the grass.
Dark Snow, 25718, Chinook. Yeah, Kevin, who is the regional manager, has gotten emails from Sid, myself, Jackie, and he's been a recipient of some pretty nasty emails. Plus, I met with him, we all met with him last week. He's trying to get people in here that can cut grass. And they keep saying they're cutting the fairways, the greens, and that, and they're lording each time they cut it. And we said, you know, it grows in between, but by the time you guys get out there, they're supposed to have somebody out there today to top off that high stuff, and then come back a little later, cut it down, keep cutting it then. That got pushed off to tomorrow. But we are on him constantly over there. And the people he has in there now, the crew is from wherever Ditt is a member of that, and they're putting their irrigation in. So these guys are skilled in traps, greens, fairways. They can even, they're supposed to be able to take down the tree over there too. And they can take down trees. It's just getting that into the agreement. But everything is so slow over there. It's been months. They started on the clubhouse. They got in there, and the builder that put it up didn't do it right. It's rotted out under there. So now they got another project part of that. It's been very frustrating for all the residents over there. And they don't rent, they do a lease to own. And what they're supposed to do is charge 200 or 300 more a month, and then you have to buy after two years. And I've read the rent, the lease on it, and it does say after two years, you either buy or leave. And the 200 a month extra is supposed to go towards down payment for the house. And they have sold a lot of them in that manner. People have come in and bought, you know, in that manner.
Norm, what can we do as a village to encourage management team over there to take care of their property?
I know, and we are hammering them. Is there something you can do to them? The residents over there are up in arms, and we're just hammering them constantly. And right now, we're holding back, and I think there'll be some radical stuff going on there in a few months.
Good.
May I, as a resident, make a comment to you? This is the first time I saw a regional director get nervous. He's really, really upset, trying to get things done, realizing that Dorf mentioned cutting grass. It's not like your yard, folks. It takes a trained group to get the different heights properly, the rough, the fairway, the tea area, and then the greens. So it's, it takes experienced people. Even the gentleman that does the caliphs has to be licensed, and these gentlemen cost more than $8 for an alvein, I say. End of comment.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. S, where are we at on the budgets?
There's been a few adjustments still in the meeting with department heads. I know Ruben and I have met with the police chief today. I'm hearing some issues regarding his portion of the budget. But I believe, I know Darryl has gotten everything as prepared as he can, but he's also been waiting for each department head to take a more active role in each of their individual departments to make sure they take ownership, if you will, of the budget in their areas. And I believe we're probably at that point where we're ready for most of that to be presented, for the board to have review of that. Again, one of the things that we were also waiting on is to get a, include what was going to happen with the state legislature regarding the LGDF. That's encouraging for us as a unit of local government that the state legislator recognized the importance of not taking away the sustenance of the local government. There's been talk of doing a property tax freeze, and again, property tax freezes sound like a noble gesture until you realize that people who would be imposing such a thing have no skin in the game. Springfield doesn't have any skin in the game for the property taxes. They get nothing out of the property taxes. That's one of our primary funding for school districts, library, fire, municipalities. And for them to put a cap on that creates an issue. If they want to get their house in order, and they want to find ultimate funding for school districts and municipalities and things like that, trust me, we're all in favor of finding better management of the property tax issue and things like that to make us competitive with other states. But to do that without correcting, getting our house in order in Springfield is, so that's part of the reason why it's important for us to have an ongoing presence in Springfield and such, so legislative point of contact. I know trustee Olson, you've been with us in the past, and if it hadn't been for work, I'm sure you would have been down here again. But it is important, and that's part of the influence that we have. So, budget wise, going back to the original question.
Yeah, back to the original question then too. And I know the department heads are working on it too and ready for presentation to the trustees, but I'm wondering if we might have like a look see at kind of our liaison of the department, so we don't have to go line by line, minute by minute, and get them this year.
True, absolutely.
Pop, we should talk about having a special meeting to go through the budget. Do we have a date when we might be able to start talking about that?
By the, by the, this is the last meeting in May, by the first meeting in June, I would expect the finance director to have given copies more up to date. There's going to be room for tweaking. But there's going to, final copies probably next week to the department heads, and for them to individually meet with the, their trustees, so they can all, all review. Because your role as a committee chair or liaison is to make sure that your department has the appropriate level, not too much, not too little, of the resources necessary to make the department operate the way it needs to.
We're going to get a copy of the retirement budget?
Of course, of course. But I'm saying primarily the focus will be with your individual departments. So, and then we'll all come together and we'll, that way it won't be like trustees picking on the department heads or something like that. It'll all be teamwork, collaboration, so. Okay. I don't believe we have anything for executive session.
Correct, your honor.
And at this point, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Pop?
Second.
Trustee Moore? Time is 7:21. Roll call.
Trustee Moore? Yes. Huh?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Olson?
Yes.